Okay, members of council, I have to call this town council work session on Monday, October 5th order. Mr. Walts, looks like the first item on the agenda is the audit class training by the town auditors. Do you want to turn it over to BJ or Jeff Mitchell?
Yeah, I'll turn it over to BJ. BJ, do you want to make any statements?
Actually, I'm just pretty much going to turn it over to Mr. Mitchell here. He's our auditing firm, Mitchell and Company out of Leesburg. He's going to give counsel a presentation here on the CAFR, Comprehensive Annual Financial Statement, and touch on a few other items, just to make sure that we're all.
Yeah, just to set the stage a little bit, I had conversations with town manager BJ about the audit, about our budget process, town finances, and I just thought it'd be a healthy idea, a good idea for council to go through this summary of the audit. It's a voluminous document, it can seem very intimidating, but I think the way Jeff's going to break it down, he's going to walk us through it, so that's going to help us through the budgeting process as well. Jeff, I'll turn it over to you now.
Okay, thanks there, council. Again, Jeff Mitchell, CPA. So we audit the Town of Front Royal. I guess we're in our third year of a five-year contract, something like that. So as we get into it, you'll see it is sort of a 12-month process. There's a lot of things that we have to deal with from an auditing perspective. Before I get started, I also want to mention that we are looked at by the auditor of public accounts. They come in and actually audit us to make sure that we're following all the state auditing rules. And actually, they just came in a month ago, and they'll be issuing a letter. They, of course, they said everything was in good shape, no issues, but believe it or not, your auditor is audited, and I just wanted to mention that to council. I have printed copies, in case anyone wanted one, so I just would have those there. So I'll try to be brief in my comments and just sort of get started in terms of what we're going to be doing here. So I'll give you a little bit of background to how we got to this complex 133-page document. It's a little overwhelming, I agree with the mayor's comment on that, but we'll give you a little background on that. We'll talk about the different sections in the CAFR, C-A-F-R stands for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Talk a little bit about the complexities in government accounting, government reporting. Talk about the uniquenesses of fund accounting, which is unique to governmental accounting and public accounting. We'll go over a selected few footnotes in the report and talk about some of the detail there. Some of the statistical data is in your CAFR, Comprehensive Financial Report. I'll also highlight in your 133-page document, specific pages to look at and focus on. This document, in my opinion, is just unreadable. It's just so voluminous. The Town of Front Royal has to do the same financial reporting that the city of Richmond does, that in Wrightville County does, and it just doesn't seem applicable to towns like the Town of Front Royal. But anyway, we're stuck with it. And then talk a little bit about our audit functions, and then lastly, we do meet with, I guess, council before the work session every year. We talk a lot of detail, we've gone through a lot of information, and so I'll just touch upon that. So getting started, so Financial Accounting Standards Board, that's FASB, that's what that stands for. That was established in 1973, and that was what was established to start what they called GAAP. GAAP is Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. And so at that point, there wasn't really a standard for financial reporting, and so Financial Accounting Standards Board, FASB, started issuing statements to establish what they called GAAP, Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. And they were geared towards commercial entities, manufacturers, transportation, those sorts of things. And so it was an awkward mix to try to use those pronouncements, those statements, for governmental entities, because there are differences. So in 1984, GASB started, and GASB is Government Accounting Standards Board. So what they did is they started to establish GAAP, or Generally Accepted Accounting Principles, for the governmental entities, specifically for governmental entities. So FASB is for all your Financial Accounting Standards Boards, for all your commercial entities, all your commercial enterprises. GASB sets the standard for all the governmental entities. So the city of Richmond, the Warren County, Town of Front Royal, Town of Leesburg, they all follow the GASB's pronouncements, and that's what is considered GAAP for municipal accounting. GFPA is Government Finance Officers Association, and when BJ became Finance Director, the first thing we told him was join that organization. There's also a Virginia chapter, and they represent public finance officers, and that's an excellent organization. They have a lot of good training sessions, they have a lot of good training sessions here in Virginia. We're members as well, and so they're very supportive of finance officers in the municipal government area. So there's a lot of resources that are available through that organization, and that goes back to 1906. I'd like to mention that the Town of Front Royal issued the GFPA Certificate of Achievement for Excellent Financial Reporting, and you can see it in their report. I believe it's 32 consecutive years that you've gotten that, which means that you've done excellent financial reporting in terms of what's required. So that's a GFPA certificate. So as far as this massive book here, the big financial statement, there's an introduction section, and what that basically talks about is highlights for the year. It's highlights for the year, who the council members are, it's sort of an introduction section. The next section in the big book, the finances, is the audit report, the actual financial statements, all the financial statement disclosures, and then all the supplemental information. So that's the second section in this annual report. The next is statistical, and statistical, they try to give the reader historical data in terms of population, in terms of services provided. It's statistical data and community data, and that's a big part of what's in the statistical. It's community data as it relates to what you do here in your community, like the number of policemen, the number of water sewer treatment plants, the number of different sort of roads that you maintain. It's sort of statistical data.
Now Jeff, is the format for our audit based upon these sections, is that the standard for GASB for all jurisdictions?
Yep, so again, we follow that, and that is outlined by the GFPA, Government Finance Officers Association. The last piece is compliance, and you all know that in any government agency, you have a lot of compliance laws and regulations, so you have a whole bunch of issues, and so we have to report on that. We have to report that you're in compliance with the state laws and regulations, and there's a whole bunch of them, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. So those are the sections of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and that's what makes up this 133-page document. So that's just an overview. So some of the complexities, some of the complexities that government entities have to deal with. First of all, you have what would be considered a composite of two different types of entities. You have governmental funds, which are activities related to the general government activity. You operate for the benefit of the community. Business-type funds are user-paid activities, where a user pays for you to provide a service, i.e. water, sewer, electrical, refuge. So there's a complete difference there. General funds collect real estate taxes, BEPOL taxes, and can use those for any purpose for the general benefit of the community. Business-type funds are not that way at all. They are completely different. You provide a service, water and sewer, you bill for it, you collect it, and then you use that money to develop that business-type enterprise, a water system, a sewer system, electric system. Okay? I'm going to stop there. That's a huge distinction. So you actually are running governmental sort of activities, at the same time you're running, if you will, commercial activities. You're kind of running both. So to make things more complicated, and we must have great lobbyists as CPAs, they have this thing, this new GASB came out called GASB 34, and what they wanted to do is they wanted to combine the governmental funds with the business-type funds and combine it into one big fund to show you what the overall government's doing. And it created more confusion, more reporting, but again, it's not something that we decided, it was something that the Government Accounting Standards Board decided. And so we have to convert your government funds to a business-type fund and do what they call a consolidated report, one report. So again, we're talking about some complexities, and this is one of them. You still report everything separately. Your governmental funds are completely separate from your business-type funds, but for financial reporting purposes only, we have to consolidate them and show one big fund, if you will. One of the difficulties we had when that came about was we had to report your infrastructure. So think about this. We had to figure out the amount of curb and gutter that you're responsible for, your sidewalks that you're responsible for, your streets and roads that you're responsible for. We had to record and figure out the value of all the infrastructure when this GASB 34 came up. It didn't make any sense to me, because you're never going to sell your sidewalk, your curbs and gutter, but this is what they wanted to do. They wanted to capture all your assets like a business would, and so there was this whole infrastructure reporting function. Your stormwater management costs and assets, we had to go back and do an assessment of all of that. The next one is APA State Compliance. So the state has come out through auditor of public accounts, that's APA, Auditor of Public Accounts, and what they've come out and said, okay, every municipality, state of Virginia, we want to make sure that you're operating in conjunction with all other governmental entities in the state. So they dictated a list of some 20 different specific compliance requirements that you have to adhere to. Some of them are not applicable to you, but some of them are. You can only put your money into banks that have posted collateral with the state. That's one of the compliance requirements. We have to check that. So a bank has to post collateral to make sure that there's no loss, a potential loss, for any of the town's funds. So that's one of them. There's also a criteria for compliance, that you're only allowed to invest your excess funds in only certain things, like government bonds, and they have to be rated a certain way. You can't invest in equities, or you can't invest in Microsoft or GE. The state law does not allow you to do that. It can only be bonds and bank CDs and things like that. So again, it's a state compliance issue that we have to look at. Also, you're required to participate in the Virginia retirement system, so there's a whole bunch of work we do to see that you are following that, those reporting requirements, and covering your employees in the Virginia retirement system. One of the most important things is a balanced budget. Every municipality, state of Virginia, including the state itself, has to have a balanced budget. So again, that's a compliance reporting. We do look at that during the year. You do have some, if you will, additional appropriations and changes, and we look at that as well. So those are some of the APA State Compliance Reporting issues. Again, this is unique to government reporting, so we wanted to mention that. Also, you have restricted funds and fund balances. So as an example, you have special revenue funds, you all see this in your budget, you have Economic Development Fund, you have a community fund. Those monies are what they call special revenue. They're restricted for a specific purpose. You can't take that money and just spend it anywhere. Once you put it in those funds, it's restricted. Again, it's a uniqueness to governmental accounting and auditing. We did mention, again, a complexity, is this document, 133-page document. It's difficult for us to actually pull this document together. It's hard for BJ to review and look at it, so I can't imagine a citizen actually trying to understand this 133-page document, let alone council. This is extremely difficult. But again, this is what we're required to do by GASB, Government Accounting Standards Board.
Oh, but I tell you, the summary document that you compiled, I believe they briefed you guys shortly after.
Yeah, I stopped over.
Yeah. That's an excellent document. I looked at the thing, I spent a fair amount of time with it over the weekend, and it was a really good document. You prepared it very well.
Well, thank you. We try to whittle it down, because it is overwhelming, and we try to whittle it down to, you know, important information, so thanks for that.
And I'm going to mention one other point. I think it's also important, a fact I didn't know until I asked, the auditor does not work for BJ and does not work for Joe Walts. The auditor legally works for council. So that's an important distinction, I think. So he's our representative.
Right on, your eyes and ears on the ground out here. And when we meet with council every year, we point out, as much as we enjoy working with management, we don't work for them. We do work for town councils. Good point. We talked about budget appropriations, so again, you're required by law to appropriate and have a budget. Again, it's required by law, and that's unique. It's unique in municipal accounting. You don't see that, industries have budget, but it's not required by law. Again, it's uniqueness. Cash versus accrual. So many of you have businesses or involve in businesses. Accrual accounting is where you account for all your expenses, even if you haven't paid yet, or all the money that people owe you that they haven't paid yet. That's accrual accounting. Well, governmental funds use what they call quasi cash. They don't even use a cash basis, they use a quasi cash. Your business-type funds do use accrual accounting. So we have two different types of funds that use two different methods of accounting. So when you see BJ walking around the halls, talking to himself, this is the reason why, some of these complexities here. All right? So that's complexities, that's what we deal with every year. Moving on to fund accounting, these are some of the things we talked about briefly before, but again, in your government funds, you assess and collect general taxes. This is funding for the general public benefit, and you can use it for any public benefit, any welfare sort of public benefit that the public benefits from. There's no restriction on disbursement types of projects. You can use the money for, again, any sort of project that you feel is appropriate. State requires that you get your budget be approved, and you get public input. So through the budget process, as you know, you all know this, you go out, you advertise it, and you have the opportunity for the public to come and comment, and they may say, well, no, we don't think you should spend X on project A. I mean, they can come and actually communicate and talk to you about that. Or they can come and say, we think you should spend more money in this area, or fund this project. So it's, again, it's a very important public process that you have in your general government fund. You get public input, and you use that to guide you in how your spending plan will go. Those funds, the government funds, include the general fund, special revenue fund, and the street fund. Just basic information. Now, your enterprise, business-type funds, those are user-fee services provided. You provide the user a service, and they pay for it. Those funds are restrictive for the user-provided service. You collect money for water and sewer, electric, refuge, then those fees go into those funds, and you have to spend that money for those funds. You can't just arbitrarily transfer any excess from enterprise, business-type funds over to the general fund for a project. Can't do that. Big, big court case in Leesburg, big, big court case in the city of Falls Church, where the citizens sued, and they won. Found that they were arbitrarily transferring money out of these business funds to the general fund without support. Huge, huge two, huge court cases.
Can you use enterprise funds, like electric funds, to support the water enterprises and vice versa? Has to stay within the one.
Yep, because it's user-paid. The people that pay the electric bill are putting money in the electric fund, so on and so forth. So the footnotes, and if you look at the audit report, the footnotes are, well, as I said, how much is too much? The footnotes are unreadable. And I prepare them, and we read them, and I find them unreadable. They're very, very difficult to read. But some of the areas that are good to understand is, is that the very first section in the footnotes, they talk about your policies and what we've developed as policies. And so those are fairly generic in the sense, but they're your reporting policies. And I didn't put the page number on there, but it starts on page 31, if you just want to note, page 31 in the big report, you can just note that. And it goes to page 33. So those are pretty good. Also, you have cash.
Can I interrupt you there, Jeff?
Sure.
A second. BJ, as it relates to our financial policies, does the council approve those every year?
The fiscal policies?
Yes, the reporting policies. Are they actually approved by, there are policies, right?
It's part, yeah, it's part of the budget. It's part of the budget.
So the policy itself is stated in the budget, or is, okay.
A lot of the policies, too, are recommended by GASB and also GFPA, so there is input from them as well. Normally, that's best practices, so you adapt, you adapt for those. The investments start on page 42, and I would just note that, cash deposits and investments. Again, that's a good footnote to see where your funds are, and that one makes sense. That's on page 42. That's probably a pretty good footnote to look at, and it just outlines, again, where your investments are. I'm going to skip down to capital assets, that's on page 46, and it would be interesting just to look at that and see. When I do my presentation to council, I do look, I do give you the overview of the capital assets in which you have. But as an example, your total capital assets in your business-type funds, as an example, are approximately 145 million. In your governmental funds, it's approximately 140 million. And again, that's on page 46, 47, you can see that. Your debt also is a good footnote to take a look at, and that starts on page 48, and that outlines the various buckets of long-term debt. The rest of it in there is just impossible to read. I mean, we've got it all in there, we've got it all in there right. You have a footnote about your pension, that's got to be at least 20 pages, and how in the world anyone can ever read that and understand it is just beyond me, but again, it's what's required by GASB, and so we put it in there. So I'm not a great proponent of GASB, but we adhere to their policies, and you are in accordance with all the Government Accounting Standards Boards. But from my perspective, we could whittle this thing down to 10 pages, and it would be very user-friendly, but this is a very difficult document. So that's the footnotes.
So when do you want to talk about encumbrances? Is that later?
Yeah, well, yep, yep, we'll get into that. We'll get into that in important CAFR highlights. So statistical data in your CAFR, that's in the back, and again, what they do is they give you statistical data, multiple-year data about town, the county, and how do you relate to the state. And it's historical trends, revenue capacity, debt capacity, demographic data that you have here in your community, and operational data as it relates to the Town of Front Royal, your facilities, your road maintenance, your police force, like the number of policemen, number of police guards. It gives you some operational data. Again, the statistical data is GFPA, Government Finance Officers Association, suggested disclosure to put in there, and so we have a whole section of statistical data, again, if you go in there, and that starts, that's on page 113.
Critications in there, too. It's really terrible.
So going to important CAFR highlights. So the report's 133 pages, so I'm highlighting approximately six pages that I think are important to look at. And so I'm going to take a few minutes, and I guess, we don't have campers, do they have campers?
It's on there, it's on there, but I also have one on the slides, if you want them brought up.
So if we could go through these pages, because I do want to highlight some specific items on the page. And we're only looking to look at these six pages, so it's not going to be too overwhelming. First page, Jeff? Uh, page 20.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Can you go back to the way you had it? It was easier to read. Yeah, thank you.
So this is the consolidated accrual report of your assets, of your governmental and your business type, and you can see the total. This is the combined town total assets, and we go down below, total liabilities. So if you stop there, your total assets are 203 million? Is that all the way over to the right, 203 million? Does that look about right? 200?
203, 30, yeah.
Yeah, 203, okay. And then you can see your liabilities are 67 million, you can see that. There's this deferred pension, which is the VRS, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. And if you look down into your equity section, your net position, you can see that in your net position, this is your unrestricted capital. And you can see in the first column on the left, the 1.7 million is your general fund unrestricted fund balance, 1.7 million. That's what you have in your general fund when you add in all your liabilities related to all the general fund activities. That's your unrestricted fund balance. Then you move over to the next column, it's 27 million. That's your business enterprise, business-type funds, electric, water, sewer, and refuge. So your question is, wait a minute, Jeff, that seems wrong. How can our general fund have 1.7 million? Why is our general fund surplus only 1.7 million? Well, the answer is, if you go back and look at the debt work paper, I guess it was three or four years ago, we had to start recording the unfunded pension liability. And it was extremely frustrating throughout the state of Virginia, because the Town of Front Royal, like every other municipality, had funded the retirement based on the Virginia Retirement System requirement. They would send you a letter every year, and you would fund it exactly how their actuarials said to fund it. But what happened was, for whatever reason, you were underfunded, and the Town of Front Royal was approximately 6 million underfunded. And that's a drop in the bucket. The city of Richmond was like 25 million, the Town of Leesburg was 10 million, and it really destroyed everyone's fund balance. The difficulty with that is that it's not a bill you got to pay tomorrow, but it's an actuarial calculated liability. And this is what made it so frustrating for every single municipality throughout state of Virginia. Nothing unique to the Town of Front Royal. Every single municipality seemingly had a deficit in terms of what VRS told them to pay and what the unfunded liability happened to be. So I'm going to stop there. I know when we met with council in the work session, we talked a lot about this and went over it. It was sort of a significant item, but again, the Town of Front Royal did nothing wrong. You paid exactly what the Virginia Retirement System said to pay. And so then to come up years later and say that you're underfunded, it just seemed horribly wrong to me, but that's what happened.
And so putting aside the money for that liability, that's money that we are now required by law to put aside and not touch?
Good question.
Right, so in the combined report, this is, we have to show it, and we have to show it as a unfunded liability. So it's, your fund balance was reduced in the general fund by 4.3 million, in your enterprise funds by 2 million. So your business-type funds, 2 million, your general fund by 4.3.
So this is the question, I think, that I asked when this all first came up, and I just wanted to clarify it. Money that we set aside and recorded for our liabilities that we are not allowed to touch, to use, loan for ourselves, loan against for ourselves, withdraw on and repay over time?
So we record the liability, and in theory, in the combined report, your unrestricted fund balance is 1.7 million. If for some reason you took on a project and you spent 2 million more than the revenue in that year, you'd end up with a deficit unrestricted. you'd end up with a deficit unrestricted. So in other words, if your total revenue in the general fund was two million less than what you spent?
But it's not actual monies that are deficits. It's the liability that's deficit.
It's the liability. But then you'd have a deficit fund balance, which you can't have.
Can't have is that it's illegal?
And we'll listen to legal counsel. But you cannot have a negative fund balance.
So where is the four-point-whatever-million dollars in our consolidated report?
So if you look back up from the bottom, go back up the page, you can see where it says due in more than one year. It's eleven million. Oh, sorry. It's in there. Go down under liabilities. It's right there. It's in that eleven million, two sixty. That's where the four point three million unfunded VRS liability resides.
So I'm a little confused. It's my understanding from the phone call last week in preparation for this meeting, it was my understanding that we are not mandated or required by law to set aside the four million dollars or whatever it was. It was the methodology that you're accounting for is based upon this process. But we're not required by law to set it aside. Where am I, where's the distinction? Where am I losing translation here?
No, well, that's right. That's right. You don't have to set aside the money.
So then why can't a town like Front Royal, if the state, if they miscalculated the VRS and there's no legal requirement for us to set the money aside as we are currently, why can't we come up with a policy and say, over the next ten years, we're going to set this money into a restricted fund?
So you can do that. The only issue is whether or not you have an unrestricted negative fund balance. That would be the issue when you run amok with state law. In other words, you could not, your unrestricted fund balance of one point seven million cannot go below zero. That's the restriction, not the actual cash to set aside. It's that you can't overspend your fund balance in your general fund by one point seven million. Because then you'd be in a negative fund balance position.
So let's change the paradigm. Let's, instead of us trying to figure out the answer, let me ask you to figure out the answer. What if we wanted to get in, tap into that four million dollars? How we would do it and be in compliance with GASB?
Well, so long as you, and again, in your budget, if your budget didn't show more than a one point seven million dollar deficit, if your budget, so if your expenses in your general fund didn't exceed?
So we couldn't borrow two million out of it? If we had one point seven in there?
Correct.
So this past year, we had a million dollars that hit us. And really, the unfunded liability happened to be.
And so I'm going to stop there. I know when we met with council in the work session, we talked a lot about this and went over it. It was sort of a significant item. But again, the town of Front Royal did nothing wrong. You paid exactly what the Virginia Retirement System said to pay. And so then to come up years later and say that you're underfunded just seemed horribly wrong to me. But that's what happened.
And so putting aside the money for that liability, that's money that we are now required by law to put aside and not touch?
Good question.
Right. So in the combined report, this is how we have to show it. And we have to show it as a unfunded liability. So it's, your fund balance was reduced in the general fund by four point three million, in your enterprise funds by two million. So your business-type funds, two million, your general fund by four million.
So this is the question, I think, that I asked when this all first came up. And I just wanted to clarify it. Money that we set aside and recorded for our liabilities that we are not allowed to touch, to use, loan for ourselves, loan against for ourselves, or to draw on and repay over time?
So we record the liability. And in theory, in the combined report, your unrestricted fund balance is one point seven million. If for some reason you took on a project and you spent two million more than the revenue in that year, you'd end up with a deficit unrestricted. So in other words, if your total revenue in the general fund was two million less than what you spent?
But it's not actual monies that are deficits. It's the liability that's deficit.
It's the liability. But then you'd have a deficit fund balance, which you can't have.
Can't have is that it's illegal?
And we'll listen to legal counsel. But you cannot have a negative fund balance.
So where is the four-point-whatever-million dollars in our consolidated report?
So if you look back up from the bottom, go back up the page, you can see where it says due in more than one year. It's eleven million. Oh, sorry. It's in there. Go down under liabilities. It's right there. It's in that eleven million, two sixty. That's where the four point three million unfunded VRS liability resides.
So I'm a little confused. It's my understanding from the phone call last week in preparation for this meeting, it was my understanding that we are not mandated or required by law to set aside the four million dollars or whatever it was. It was the methodology that you're accounting for is based upon this process. But we're not required by law to set it aside. Where am I, where's the distinction? Where am I losing translation here?
No, well, that's right. That's right. You don't have to set aside the money.
So then why can't a town like Front Royal, if the state, if they miscalculated the VRS and there's no legal requirement for us to set the money aside as we are currently, why can't we come up with a policy and say, over the next ten years, we're going to set this money into a restricted fund?
So you can do that. The only issue is whether or not you have an unrestricted negative fund balance. That would be the issue when you run amok with state law. In other words, you could not, your unrestricted fund balance of one point seven million cannot go below zero. That's the restriction, not the actual cash to set aside. It's that you can't overspend your fund balance in your general fund by one point seven million. Because then you'd be in a negative fund balance position.
So let's change the paradigm. Instead of us trying to figure out the answer, let me ask you to figure out the answer. What if we wanted to get in, tap into that four million dollars? How we would do it and be in compliance with GASB?
Well, so long as you, and again, in your budget, if your budget didn't show more than a one point seven million dollar deficit, if your budget, so if your expenses in your general fund didn't exceed?
So we couldn't borrow two million out of it? If we had one point seven in there?
Correct.
So this past year, we had a million dollars that hit us. And really, we just, as you quite bit on that one, because we were going to use those funds for projects.
We also had additional GASB reporting hit us this past year with line item.
So it wasn't just four million. It was, it hit us this year.
We had an additional reporting last year that hit us.
So what does a city like Richmond do when they have twenty-five million dollars? They probably didn't have that much in their general fund.
Yeah.
So what, so what do they do?
Good question. Don't know. I haven't looked at their report. I don't know how they handled their financial reporting.
Okay.
But Jeff, you're saying, as long as we got one dollar in that fund over and above zero, we're okay?
Yep.
Okay, well, here's the other case. So let me ask you this. I got twenty-seven million in my enterprise funds, correct? Unrestricted? So I could theoretically borrow twenty million of that and be within GASB?
Right. So when we built this town hall, we bought this town hall, we borrowed from the electric fund. So the answer to your question is yes.
But you got to pay it back.
Got to pay it back.
What?
Interest rate. Seven percent.
Terms, too, right?
Yep.
So I think it's really important for us to get a handle on these unrestricted balances. Really important. Because, you know, I hear it. I'm sure you guys have heard a lot of it. You know, our taxes, our fees, our, all these various enterprise accounts, electric rates going up, you know, all these different things going up. And our fund balances are strong and going up.
Well, you have to take into account also, we have the three-month reserve comes out of the unrestricted balance, as do the encumbrances and carryovers.
That's right.
And.
Three-month reserve equals how much again?
Half-farish.
One point five?
Sorry. You caught me off guard there.
No, that's okay. It's okay.
So roughly, probably fifteen and eighteen million?
In total.
Yeah, in total, because we're doing three months of fifty-three or fifty million dollar budget, roughly.
Fifteen or eighteen?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Mr. Mitchell, in regards to the twenty-seven million dollars, I know that we have to carry over so much per enterprise funds for the three months. But does that also include money that we've already pretty much allocated for products that extend into future? Theoretically, we don't have twenty-seven million dollars.
That's right.
We probably got only about three or four million dollars that's set aside that's not already been allocated for certain projects. So when the public gets the idea we got twenty-seven million, no, we don't have twenty-seven million that we can spend. We've got the accessibility to it. It's already been appropriated for some other project or something else that we've already got in the mail so that we can utilize them.
Our three-month reserve is eleven point nine million. I stand corrected. And the total encumbrances?
And that comes out of which bucket?
It comes out of the unrestricted.
Yeah, total encumbrances, what, fourteen?
Yeah, total encumbrances was fourteen million. So there alone, roughly, we're looking at twenty-five million that are.
So you have, we have unrestricted four million dollars?
Yes.
And that's, okay. So let's talk about the encumbrances.
Yeah, let me just step back just for one more second. And we'll jump into encumbrances. The other issue that came up that was just brought up here that happened last year is that we all had, we had a policy to cover health insurance for retired employees. And in prior years, we didn't have to book the full liability. In June of eighteen, we had to book the full liability. So that was another two point seven million. The town had to pay ten thousand dollars to get an actuarial report for them to come in and look at the census of your employees and do an actuarial calculation as to potentially what that liability may be. Now, you've changed the policy, but you have legacy employees that come under that health insurance benefit policy. And so the Government Accounting Standards Boards stipulated last year, June of eighteen was the first year, we had to book the full liability. And then again, it's just like the VRS. We were setting aside money and paying for it. But then all of a sudden, we had to book the full, if you were to close the doors today, what the actuarials said, you had to put money aside for potentially having to pay that. So it's extremely frustrating because it's not a bill you got to pay today or tomorrow. So in the general fund, we, again, I'm being redundant, we had to book another two point seven million on top of the unfunded pension liability of four point three million. So this is what happened to your unrestricted fund balance. This is how it was.
So basically, we had nine million dollars roughly taken out of unrestricted fund balances for VRS and the health actuarial. That's nine million dollars that could have been used for capital projects. They got wiped out in the last twenty-four months.
Now, the only good thing about that, the one will go down.
Yeah.
The medical.
The health insurance.
But the other one's going to go up. If VRS goes up, that'd go up.
The other thing we had in that eleven million is, June of eighteen, we had the public safety project underway. And we had three million dollars as an advance we booked from the EDA. In other words, we had spent three million. At June of eighteen, we had spent three million dollars on the Public Safety Center. And we hadn't paid any of it. We, the town had not paid it. Well, they'd paid up some. But the point is, the majority of the town had paid any of it. And the whole idea that the EDA was going to do this new market tax credit, so on and so forth. So we had to book that as an advance from the EDA of three million. So that was in the eleven million as well.
Jeff, out of the nine million that kind of got eaten up as a liability that we booked, what do we do with that money, the actual money sitting in the bank account? Is it earning interest for us other than the bank account? Are we able to use that money and save the interest costs from taking out loans for other projects? I get the book and the liability, but it seems like a lot of money, a lot of money is sitting there that we're not utilizing.
So the town has an investment policy. And they've got a whole series of governmental security funds.
Are we using that, we're using those monies in those funds?
So we have money in the LGIP, the Local Government Investment Pool. Again, we have US government securities, treasuries, bonds. And so.
But out of that nine million that is set into those kind of funds, even though we're booking it as a liability?
Right. We have forty-two million, forty-two million that's invested in marketable bank CDs, government security mutual funds, direct government securities, and the LGIP, the Local Government Investment Pool.
So those are all about two or three percent funds? Two percent funds less? Two percent less? And they're taking interest loans at four percent plus?
Do policy help? Or we can't help it? What I think, it was perplexing to me is, you can have six million dollars in future liabilities that you have to book a hundred percent of it today. And we can't come up with a policy that we can't get an acceptance through GASB or through legislation or whatever that would allow us to come up with a plan in order to set the money aside over a ten-year period? Because it's not going to be used within that time period.
Correct.
So it's just absurd that we're required, and that money can't be, that money can't be used for our three-month reserve allowance, allocation, can it?
It's correct because.
It's got to be allocated specifically for.
It's a liability. We have to book it as a liability.
And there's no, there's no way of coming up with an, getting an exception through some standards board or?
No, every municipality's dealing with this. Every municipality. This is not unique to the town of Front Royal. Right? And it's hugely frustrating. I'm being redundant. You paid exactly what you were supposed to pay VRS. And all of a sudden, bam, you got a six point.
Well, that's one, yeah, that's one thing. But the fact that we're being required to account for a hundred percent of it in year one, I think, to me, that's just, that's absurd.
What happens to that interest on those funds?
It accumulates, it accumulates in the accounts.
It comes back into revenue in our budget.
Revenue for what?
For each individual fund. So however much is allocated, the general fund goes.
So we can't tap that, pull that out?
Yeah, it goes to general fund. Well, it's included in our budget, the interest is. So we're budgeting for the revenue.
You just can't take out that amount of money and set aside for those two, three different projects.
I'm just interested in the interest.
Yeah, you pull the interest out.
Yeah, the interest gets used in our annual budget.
So we make that determination? We as a council?
Yeah, when the budget's adopted. You'll see a line item in every fund for revenue.
Yeah. We need to really look at that.
Okay, so that is the consolidated complexity of taking the governmental funds, consolidating it, and creating it like a business, adding it to the business column, which is the second column coming over, all the way over with the total. So that, that was page twenty. Page twenty-two, just want to go to page twenty-two. This is the next item on the agenda to take a look at. So this is your assets of your regular modified cash basis for governmental funds. So I'm going to really make you all mad and frustrated. But if you go down to the bottom under fund balance, before we whacked your fund balance for the VRS, the health insurance, if you go down to the bottom, you had a surplus of unassigned of six point three million. And if you could just, you see that on the very right-hand side? Yep. And then if you go over, well, you had a little bit of a deficit of four hundred thousand. But anyway, to point it in your special revenue. That was your general fund unrestricted fund balance. That was your general fund unrestricted fund balance before the VRS obligation, before the health insurance obligation, and before they were recorded. So I just would, just point that out. Went from 6 million to 1.7.
Did you know?
Yep. So I just wanted to point out, again, this is the modified cash basis. The first report we saw was the full accrual like a business for your general fund. The next page is page 25. And I like to point this out because this is your, this is your general fund revenue and expenses, your original budget, your final budget compared to actual. So this is, this is how you operate. You operate based on looking at this, and you should look at this every month. BJ does, you know, provide a report, but this is critical. This tells you what your, what your budget, what your budget is and where you are on your revenue and where, and your general fund, and where you are on your expenditures. And this is how you manage and guide your general operations with the town of Front Row. So if you go down sort of towards the bottom, you can see you have a surplus of 1.4 million. And again, this is before we took the accrual for the health insurance and the Virginia retirement system. So from a budgetary standpoint, again, this, you're dealing with in round figures 14, 16 million and you're doing a good job in terms of comparing what you're spending with what your budget is and what your projected revenue is and what your actual revenue is. So this is a critical, this is a critical report. This is what you should focus on monthly, certainly this report. The next page is page 28. And 28, this is the same sort of report for your enterprise, your business-type funds. It shows your revenue, and again, this is, this is an area you should focus on, BJ does this every month. It shows you your electric department, your water department, and then if you flip the page to page 29, it shows the sewer department and then the refuse department. And it shows you your revenue, your projected, it shows your actual revenue and your actual expenses. And again, this is, I think, a critical page that you should focus on every month. And again, BJ gives you all financial reports on this.
But here's what's, here's what's challenging, if not perplexing. If we're supposed to be focusing on it every month and we're, and we see that we have a surplus of X dollars and then the auditor comes in and says, well, I'm sorry, but, you know, 90% of that goes to VRS or the health, health plan. I mean, what are we, other than the line items, I mean, it, it's extremely challenging. We've gotta come up with a different, I guess we've gotta come up with a different system. I'm not saying a different system for auditing, because that is what it is. We need to come up with a different system somehow of... I've seen four different unrestricted fund balances. Now, these guys are bright people and, and, you know, citizens are bright people, but how? There's gotta be some kind of a system we can put in place where on a monthly basis, all this gets factored in and we get a true bottom-line assessment of operations. You know what I'm saying?
I know what you're looking for, but with all of the GASB requirements, a lot of that can't be done until the end of the year. We can look at it, we look at it on a monthly basis, you know, where our budget stands, where our actual revenues are. But some of these items, you can't do until you get your actuarial reports and you get to the year. You know, GASB's coming out with a new pronouncement like they did last year, that's gonna hit us. So outside of what we have in place, I don't know what else we could do, any suggestions?
Well, the big unknown is the Virginia retirement system and the actuarial report, we won't get the actuarial report for-
Won't get it till August or September?
September. So your, your end's gone and over with.
Yeah.
And we don't know what your unfunded liability is.
We won't see that, yeah.
That's the state of Virginia for providing that report. We can't, we can't go in and do anything. I, we can't go in and do it, no one can do it except the state of Virginia. So there, there is a huge frustration.
Yeah.
And this is what, when I made these presentations to council, I can tell you, it was a huge frustration for council when we dealt with this.
Well, we have the money. I think getting back to Mr. Tjuk's point, I'd be interested in knowing what happens when you, when you don't. So if we went ahead and spent it and then it increases and we have to come up with another 3 million, then what do you do? You know, you can't be expected to pay it back that year, so there has to be some sort of-
You know, I guarantee you, city of Richmond did not have the money in their general fund to set aside.
The, the state does, does evaluate our, our financials. And if we get into a crisis situation, they will come in and mandate that we replenish and have a plan of action to replenish. Now, what that entails, I don't-
What, what's a crisis?
A crisis being-
We have cash. We're not booking all the liabilities.
Exactly, if we submit our CAFR to them every year, if we get into a crisis where, like Jeff was saying, where our net position is in the negative, they will mandate us to put in a plan of action.
I got, I got a plan of action.
Payback?
For the next 10 years, we're gonna put $600,000 into the VRS plan.
And I don't know what, you know, what they would mandate, I don't know that.
We need to get answers on this.
As you said, all that we can do is rely on what BJ gives us at each point.
That's right.
And so if we drop down below that zero mark, then we're in trouble.
That's right.
Back to what you say. So we gotta make sure that we follow that program and make sure that we're not doing-
There's a lot of, there's a lot of bond ratings.
Yeah, so if we get into bond rate now, going into the $10 million that we're gonna borrow, we surely don't wanna drop below the zero mark.
Right.
That means our interest rates go escalating. So we need to be pretty close to positive what we're doing so that we're aware that we're not overspending money that we don't, we have or we don't have as far as utilizing. So that's important to me to realize that.
Yeah, you'll be rated, if you go out and get the $10 million bond, they'll, they'll really scrub down your CAFR. And they're, you know, obviously they're financial people, so they understand this in greater detail. They will scrub it down.
We need, I think, well, last, I'm beating the wars dead, wars. The, the last, we need to make sure that we've, we have used every possible accounting methodology to see if there's a way of getting this money that they just wiped out of our unrestricted fund balance. Now, you probably have done that and I appreciate that, but I just wanted to reiterate that point. I wanna find out, I wanna find out the answers to that.
Well, I echo that because I'm looking at this, son, may we, we're gonna have to take a bond. I don't know where we're at with that right now. Well, we got the money right there, why we're gonna go invest to somebody else and they pay us interest? Why we can't take it and pay ourselves back? That, that just blows my mind. We're gonna pay, what's the rate now? Well, just reduce it a little bit.
Four and a quarter?
Four?
And it's 4.5 cents?
Cool.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be a budget issue, obviously, when you, when you look at your budget.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna hear from me.
Yeah.
Frustrator of that.
But Jeff, really going back to the basics, to follow your guidelines, which you're, are auditor, we need to follow what you said. Until sometime we get something that you're referring to there, we need to follow the guidelines that we're being told tonight into the GASB.
Absolutely.
I wanna make sure that the council realizes that, that we just can't take money that's sitting in a pot of money somewhere and all of a sudden we say, oh, we got all this money, we can go ahead and spend it. We need to make sure, and I think, I think BJ could, I think he's done that before, I know I have it somewhere, that you've given us how much allocation we already done in enterprise funds, how much money's left, what's, has, has been spent, what needs to be spent. And so that's important, I think, to be, you know, if we say we got $10 million, but if you got 9.5 already allocated, allocated for something, then you only have 500,000.
You bet the project hasn't started and you have money sitting there.
Well, yeah, but if you spend it, then you don't have the money when the project begins. So to me, that's just what I have to begin with. That's something I think maybe if you could show us that too, to know exactly how much money we have in all the enterprise funds, the general fund, whatever, that's not restricted to a project.
Yeah, we review that annually and this year when I bring the encumbrances back, I will try to break it down a little differently so you can tell how the-
Well, I know you did it before, because we're, I've got it somewhere.
We've done it several times.
Yeah, and if we don't have a whole lot of money that's not restricted already to either a project or something, because I would say it seemed to me like it was around $2 million, $2 or $3 million.
A little bit more than that, but the, we'll certainly be bringing it back as we do every year. It's after the CAFR is done, when we have all our actuarials in, that's the biggest thing.
So flip quickly to page 48 and 50, and actually I wanna focus on page 50. And this is your debt, and I just wanna point out on page 50, so 48 starts your debt, but on page 50, if you, if you can make that a little, I don't know, a little bit bigger, but you can see, you can see your governmental debt at the top. And the second item down is the OPEV, OPEV health, 2.7 million. So that was the, that was the, 2.7 million was the actuarial calculation for the unfunded health benefit for employees, and that's legacy employees. So it was discussed, we had to book another 1.4 million in June of 18 because of the change in the GASB reporting. And this is what council was just furious about last year. 1.4 million, we had to book that. Then if you go down below at the very bottom, the unfunded pension liability line, you can actually see your unfunded pension went down from 5.6 million to 4.3 million last year. Now, the big question, we met with council, maybe you remember, they kept, so how did that happen, Jeff? Why did it happen? And I can only tell you, I have no idea, because it's an actuarial calculation. We simply, they give us the numbers. And I don't know how they calculate it. We get a 20-page report and this is the number.
I'm liking it.
So that was, that was a positive if you would expect.
So they'll come back next year.
Yeah, yeah, next year, pipe out the rest of our balance.
So lastly, on the important CAFR, like, page 99 to 104 is your general fund revenue and expenditures actual to budget, pages 99 to 104, and that's more detail. And that, I would just have you look at that. If you have questions about any of those items in comparison to the budget, BJ has all the detail. You know, why did the pilot taxes go up? Why did the B-Pole go down? Why did real estate taxes go up? Why did the zoning department expenses go up? BJ has all the details. So those pages, 99 to 104, has your detailed general fund revenue and expenses by specific line.
And this is what I go over mainly during our revenue forecasting. Say, you know, meals tax increased this amount because of this. And go through the big, big ticket items, I don't wanna hit every single line item, but the big ticket differences is what I hit during our revenue forecasting.
Okay. So if we go back to the presentation, I'll wrap up.
Well, before you wrap up?
Yeah.
Encumbrances.
Okay.
$14 million in encumbrance, right? There's two different methodologies of accounting for that. Do you wanna explain that to council?
So there's a special project accounting that could be adopted. What that would mean is, is we'd have to adopt additional funds. Each, each fund would also then have a project fund. We could allocate the funds over to the project fund once the project has began. So we would have an additional budget for that specific project. We would still roll over the money, just like we do now for the encumbrances, but when the project begins, we could allocate that money over into the project fund for the specific project. And then, once the project has began, the fund's been adopted, we wouldn't have to come back to reallocate if the project were to go on for multiple years.
So let me, let me try to translate, see if I'm accurate, okay? So the way, the way the town currently accounts for encumbrances is, once the, once the council decides that they wanna do a project, that money's encumbered. Okay?
100%.
100%. Council could decide the next meeting that they don't wanna do the project, or the next year that they don't wanna do the project. But until which time that decision's made, that money's encumbered. Under the second methodology is you're counting for by project, therefore, the money is not encumbered, the money's not encumbered until the project begins. Correct?
Well, the money is still encumbered. The money doesn't move over into the project budget until the project begins. We're still encumbering the money, we're still doing everything exactly the same. It's just we have a project budget.
But that would, that would, that would, I thought, I thought the money, I thought the money goes into the unrestricted balance until-
It goes into restricted once the project begins.
Once the project begins, it goes restricted.
Once it begins, we've started the project and that means we're starting to spend the money.
Okay. But let's say we have, out of the 14 million dollars, as my recollection, could be wrong.
Yeah, 14 million is what we have.
Okay. Let's say there's 4 million of, $4 million of money that has not begun.
Okay.
Okay, I'm picking a number. I don't know what that number is. That money is allowed to be used by council in the unrestricted balance.
As it is now, that's correct.
I thought it was encumbered now, we could not use it now.
It's encumbered, council can direct us to use the encumbered funds at any point in time.
But we don't know, but we don't know, but we don't know what we're really using. I mean, we don't know what the projects are for, whereas if you had to buy a project, at least you would know.
And that's the kid, when we carry over the purchase orders, there's a list that I provide with council that lists every encumbrance that we have. This year, I do tie them breaking out differently to show, you know, where we're, kinda give a little bit of a description or maybe how much we spent this fiscal year for the project. So to me, there's not really a benefit in doing the special project.
Yeah, you're right, if, I didn't know about this, I didn't know about the report that Gene just referenced. If, if that report, here's why I think that's a big deal. So council votes on projects, right? And you, whatever the projects might be. But you have the ability, until that project actually begins, you have that ability to use those funds for higher priority projects that Bill was talking about, or whatever the case might be.
But that puts the other project back on hold for another year.
Possibly. Yeah.
That's why you have, we've been pushing to have a legitimate project list.
That's right.
You can prioritize, you got immediate and you've got long range.
Start dates, start dates, time periods. I think that'd be a good monthly document, or quarterly for us to see. The project.
I'll work with that.
Yeah.
We'll get some more discussion.
Yeah, okay.
I'll go, I'll go back to the elephants in the room though. We've been two years now working with the EDA to get what we actually owe. And we haven't gotten, these projects are still something out there with no dollars assigned. That's what troubles me. We don't know.
See, that's our problem. We should've had monies already started and know where it was coming from before we allowed the project to go forward.
Appropriations gotta be there before you agree to the project.
Or have a way to receive that money. Now, we did the new market tax credits, that didn't come through, so now we're back in limbo.
Yeah, but still, we were late with that. We should've had this first, the monies before-
Exactly.
Well, we were essentially getting loans for those, so there wasn't necessarily an appropriation, right? Other than paying the interest.
Well, but then if you're gonna say I'm gonna borrow 10 million, you're gonna know over here where you're gonna get that money from to pay it back.
See, that's what I'm saying, that's why we're gonna pay four and a half, so 2.65. If we'd went on and done the 2.65 and not worried about the tax credits, we would be, already have the money, we'd be paying off the bill. But we waited, we waited, we waited, and now it's just escalated. And now, we don't know what, what's gonna be when we get to bond market.
Do you wanna fight? Do you wanna fight, you wanna bring that back up again?
I was gonna say, I heard.
I gotta bring it up, because we got a bunch, $10 million from some source, period, you know?
Okay, Jeff? Is that good?
Yeah, that's good, so back to presentation, I just, a couple last, we can get back to the presentation. I can wrap this up.
That's right, we have it here, BJ.
It's on page 111.
So, so let's see, we-
I think you're on the last page, page 11. Regardless, that's probably the page we need to wrap up.
So real quick, page 10, the only thing I wanted to mention on page 10 is the art process. It's almost a 12-month process, we start planning in May, we get a ploner again in July, we can do a lot in August and September. September, and then we meet with council and do review in October, November. So just, just to mention that. The, so page eleven, the last page, the, we do come to council, and we do talk a lot about some of the specificity each year. And so we shared with the, with the mayor the presentation for last year, and we do hit these specific topics every single time that we've been out and we do an audit, we do hit these specific topics. So we, we look at the capital assets, we look at this OPEV, which is the other post-employment benefits, the VRS pension, the debt, the appropriations, and the unrestricted fund balance. So, so I'll conclude there and stop. I'd be happy to address any specific questions, knowing that this is a lot of stuff.
Well, another, another encumbrance we also have is all of our, our long-tenured employees, we got to make sure we have covered the sick leave, vacation, and all the other fringe uses. That's got to come in there somewhere in this, this money that's being set aside, because when that employee retires, he's got, say, thirty years, and he's got two thousand dollars sick leave, or he's got whatever, that money's got to be available to pay that person off in order to cover when he leaves. And so that money's in here somewhere, I'm not even sure exactly where, but I do know that that's a pretty big chunk of money for our tenured employees, and we have to make sure we have it available, have the availability.
So we do book that liability, and that's part of a reduction in your fund balance to get to the one point seven.
Right.
So a good point.
Going back to the unrestricted funds of the, both the enterprise and the general fund, are we allowed to borrow against the enterprise fund? Let's just say for the police station and pay it back? Let me start with that question first. Are we allowed to borrow against that and pay it back?
The answer's yes.
And I think some of the fear in the past has been kind of eaten away at that, whatever we called it, the cushion or available funds that are there. But in reality, we still have forty-seven million that has been set aside in, I forget if you call it the bonds or investments as far as cash in the bank.
Forty-two million.
Okay. That is set aside for liabilities primarily retirement, health insurance.
The only problem is, well, it sounds great, but we don't have the money. We've already talked about that one time. Because of our allocations to projects we've already done, we don't have ten million dollars left at all the general funds to cover all those expenses.
In the unrestricted balances?
Right.
If we dip into the three-month reserve and, and go below the restricted balance, I guess you could say we do, but in the way we reported on the CAFR in that, we don't have.
Out of the twenty-nine million, I heard you say that there was twenty-some million, twenty million? I can't remember what you said, that was already.
Fourteen million is what we had encumbered, and then twelve million is the three-month reserve.
Can't get a better handle on the projects than fourteen million?
Yeah.
Of what's actually encumbered.
Yep.
Well, see, that's why I'm saying, that's what we need from you, BJ, is what BJ's talking about. How much money that is not tied up already in a project or a future project that we do, are able to utilize for whatever projects we decide to do. And I, I don't think it's a whole lot much money, it's about three or four million dollars as I recall, and that's only in the general price one.
But as far as this reporting goes, it's not recording the encumbered dollars, right?
It's all wrapped in to the numbers.
But my point is, we're concerned that if we borrow against it and we have fourteen million encumbered, that this is going to have a negative impact on our bond rating. But that isn't the case the way it's reported, because if we took fourteen million out, even that, if we took ten million out, for instance, and allow against the police station, even that we know we have fourteen million encumbered, it's not being reported that way, but we still have to keep our reserves up for the purchase of, our purchase power requires it, some of our bonds that we already have.
Three months.
Three months. That, that's what I'm talking about, though. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Eleven million.
So you still have that.
Yeah, if we were to use all of the encumbered funds?
You, I'm just saying, for the purpose of the reporting here, you could borrow against that ten million without this report looking like it's in the negative. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes.
Right, so it would be a due-to, due-from, from different funds, and they would net out to zero. It would be an asset for one fund and a liability for another, and they would zero out.
But it wouldn't have an adverse effect on this report.
It would not. It would just reduce your cash, your forty-two million debt.
If we were to spend all of the money in the encumbrances, then it would have a negative effect.
If, yeah, if tomorrow we all of a sudden spent all the money on that. Yes, yeah, I get that.
Again, I, I think, Joe, pleasure of council, I think we ought to put a work session item just to talk about the encumbrances and the projects so that we can really hone in and get an understanding of that, because we have the, we have the budget, actually, the budget work session starts, what day is that?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Nineteen.